He forgot the mallet.
Let's call in order with the budget relievers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the very public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Clerk Cody, would you do a roll call of the board, please?
Supervisor Milky.
I am here.
Treasurer Rice.
Here.
Trustee Bills.
Yes, here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Houck.
Here.
Clerk Cody, here. Trustee Thering is excused.
Very good. Thank you very much. That brings us to item four on our agenda, approval of the agenda. Be happy to entertain any motions.
I move to approve the agenda.
Support.
Motion by Bills, support by Rice. Any discussion?
These are none.
All in favor of approving the agenda as presented?
Aye.
Can you say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Oh, thank you. Um, forgot my, my mallet today, but, um, so motion to approve the agenda passes unanimously. Uh, we have no presentations tonight, no public hearings, so that brings us to item seven on the agenda, uh, public comments. Public comment is restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. Uh, please note that if you're going to address the board or public, state your name and address for the record, and we'll open up public comment at 7:01 PM.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jerry Neier, uh, 1455 East Walton Road, Shepherd. I am currently running for state representative, and I'm just here to let you know that, and I'm here to take in the meeting. Um, been active in the county advocating for the rural community and agriculture, obviously, because of my farming background. But I've also been serving for the last eighteen-plus years on the Planning Commission for Isabella County, so I have a good idea of the growth pattern of the county and understand a lot of the inner workings, not only with the county, but also with Union Township and the other chartered townships in the, in the county. So, I got a good idea of how the county works, and I'd like to take that knowledge and that background down to Lansing and get, and, uh, represent us in a fair, fair and honest way, try and bring some common sense down there and bring our values down there. I've had a good working relationship with our past legislators, or legislators, and understand the value of listening to our community and listening to the people, and I plan to carry that through in my office when I take office, hopefully. Other than that, I'm here to take in the meeting and enjoy your input. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Good evening. Kevin Willis on behalf of MCAP, and, uh, thanks for having me back.
Welcome back.
I can give you my address, but it probably means nothing to you. It's in the middle of Charlottesville, Virginia. Um, but I am here for the second reading of the rezoning on Prestige Center, and just wanted to say hello, thank you once again, and let you know I'm available if any questions arise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment is still open? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close public comment at 7:03 PM. That takes us to item eight, closed session, of which none is proposed, I believe. Uh, item nine on the agenda, report boards and comments. Um, we can begin with some member board reports. I think I started on this side last time, so Trustee Houck.
All right. I just have one question. In our board packet, we keep getting an application for the zoning board of appeals from Bre- Breann Muggenberg. Are we gonna act on that? We have openings on that, or?
We do, we actually have two openings, um, but they're, they've not been meeting, so I've been hoping for additional applications too.
All right.
Yep. We're fortunate in some ways that the ZBA doesn't meet often.
Right, well, that's good. I watched a road commission meeting on the 26th of May. They approved more gr- more gravel road refurbishing for townships that didn't get any, get their stuff in soon enough. They approved three more of those. Um, they approved a bridge in Nottawa Township that, it borders between Nottawa and Sherman Township. Half of it's in Nottawa, half of the bridges in Sherman. It's amazing. One point eight million dollars. Let me get to this page. They talked about the bid letting for Lincoln Road. That's gonna happen July 8th, and they made a point to say that there's sixty-four contracts up that date that are coming before MDOT, and Tony was Tony Casale, the road commission manager, said that's a lot of applications. He said that normally they run twenty-eight to thirty when they have their meetings. The flood damage up in Rosebush, the Rosebush area between Isabelle and Denver Townships, they said that's gonna run between a hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand. Last I knew, there was still one road closed, Rosebush Road, and then you could get up there, I don't know, Terri. Um, it was closed a couple days ago, I know that. They were talking about how hard it is to get trucks. There are six trucks behind. Usually they buy two or three new ones a year. They're six behind. They don't see any relief in that. Now they're out bidding on anything they can get. It's kinda interesting that when they get a truck in, a new one costs a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and then they remodel it to their specifications, and they wind up having two hundred and seventy to three hundred thousand dollars in them. And they were, this was just before Memorial Day, so they were, said that they had brined all the roads out in front of all the cemeteries. So, I thought that was pretty cool that they did that. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Clerk Cody? Treasurer Rice?
Taxes. That's it. No, taxes, um, are, you know, underway, um, getting, getting prepared so that they can be in the mailboxes for July 1st, so. So, all I got.
Okay. Trustee Bills?
Yes, I attended the Isabella County Board of Commissioners meeting last night, and, uh, there are a few things I wanted to bring up. So, number one, they are, uh, Jim McBride was there, and somebody from, somebody, one of the commissioners asked about the passenger rail project, and he said that they're actually gonna be testing some of the track this year, but that some of the track, that, that's the passenger rail, it goes kinda diagonally up through the state. Did you see anything on that? Oh, anyway, uh, it's, some of the track is not fit for passenger, but it's, it's good for, enough for industrial or freight, okay? So, they have to change that around, everything, and make upgrades, but they're gonna be doing some testing this year. I thought that was pretty cool. Um, and he went over his whole annual report like he did with us. Uh, so, they did a few things, but the main thing is, um, that I thought was really cool is they approved the Isabella Commission on Aging is going to build a pavilion. It's gonna be eighty-foot long and have a pickleball court inside. It's gonna have restrooms, and it's gonna be right by the walking track there. So, that's gonna be really cool, 'cause they just started a walking club, which has fourteen members. Anybody? Anyone? Anyway. Um, and so they'll have restrooms there. That, they're hoping to break ground on that this year. And, uh, Sheriff was there and made a few, few reports, and, um, he's down six deputies. He's hoping to get somebody back off medical leave soon, but he's way down on people. He's at like fifty-five, sixty percent of his workforce right now, and he's taking his own calls now. So, so he wants to get his people back, and, uh, I guess they're, that's all I've got on that. We gave one of his deputies a raise. Um, and then they're also doing a contract with Resource Recycling Systems that's going to do a feasibility study on the way things are done at the recycling facility, and that's first I've heard of that, so I thought it was really cool. They're gonna maybe revamp the, the way they do things there and maybe make it more efficient, which would be cool, and, uh, save us, save us a couple bucks or something. And some parking lot repairs at the Commission on Aging, and, uh, the Supreme Court, I'm sure you guys might have heard of this. The Supreme Court of Michigan just recently, uh, brought down a ruling that said the all trial courts in Michigan are gonna be closed on Juneteenth, but they literally just let them know this week. So, and it has to start this year, and it's paid for everybody that works at the trial court. So, they had to clear all the dockets for like, all those people. Anyway, FYI, and that's all I've got today.
And for some of those people, they're probably glad.
Well, the, the employees, well, yeah.
No, but I mean those that are on the docket and don't wanna be.
I can under, I can understand that, but it's, it's like, where the heck are you gonna put these people now?
Six months out.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you. Trustee Brown?
Yes, uh, Mount Pleasant City Commission meeting will be Monday, so I'll have a report in the next meeting.
Very good. Uh, I've only had a couple things. Um, the executive committee met Monday, uh, 4:15. We might've been a few minutes late. Um, and I don't, did I bring this up in the previous meeting? Uh, we've decided as an executive committee to meet, uh, essentially the Mondays prior to agenda for the executive team to go through the agenda with the manager, much like I've done in the past every two, essentially two weeks. Um, and as I thought about it more, and Mark and I talked about it over the last few months, we felt it'd be helpful for the entire executive committee to be there, uh, cover more ground. So, uh, we had our first of those meetings Monday. And then also on Monday was the Day of Remembrance, um, out at the, uh, old school here on Pickard and, is it Crawford or Harris? Kinda changes, right? Uh, I did have an opportunity to go there. Um, I did not spend the day. I had other obligations, but it's, um, a very sobering, at least for me, it was a very sobering experience. It was amazing. I got, got to sit through the pipe ceremony, which was great to hear the stories. Um, there was leaders, tribal leaders from all over the Midwest, Great Lakes area. Um, is there a proper name for them? Teridino? I'm asking Terri, 'cause I saw her there.
For the, the pipe carriers?
Pipe carriers, thank you.
Pipe carriers, yeah.
And so each of them are leaders in their own communities and, and came to speak in our Day of Remembrance here. Uh, and so it was an amazing experience anyways. It's June 6th next year. It's June 6th every year, so put that on your calendar for next year if you have the opportunity. Do you have a question?
Yes.
Yeah.
Who's on the executive committee? I'm sorry, but to be ignorant of that.
So, part of this is wanting to live up to our policy governance more.
Uh-huh.
So, that's the supervisor, the clerk, the treasurer, and the manager.
Roger. Thank you.
Yep.
Policy governance first, then the management team.
Management team, thank you.
Yes.
Management team is how it's referred to.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate the clarification. Does that help?
Little bit.
All right, thank you. All right, and with that, that brings us to item 10 on our agenda, consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Motion by Bills, support by Rice. Um, in
I have warrants.
Trustee Thering's absence, you had warrants. Anything to note?
Everything's great. Looks, everything looks great.
Any other discussion on the motion to approve the consent, consent agenda?
No.
Seeing none, all in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Motion to approve the consent agenda passes unanimously. That brings us to item 11A, new business. Uh, this is a second reading, um, and proposed adoption of PREZ 21-03, planned unit development. Uh, we recently had the first reading, um, and with that, I'd be happy to ask our manager if you have anything else to reintroduce on this.
Just that following the last, uh, I'm sorry, following the last board meeting, all the postings were done, uh, as required by, uh, local, state regulations, summary of the proposed ordinance, and the notice and, uh, for this meeting tonight. We're all posted properly, so you're, uh, in good standing to act as you desire tonight.
Thank you. Happy to entertain motions or questions or discussion.
I'll make a motion to conduct a second reading for and to adopt the PREZ 21-03, request to rezone parcels 14-013-20-043-02 and 043-08 at 5785 East Broadway Road from the B4, General Business District, to PUD planned unit development, which also includes the associated PUD concept plan for the Prestige Center, assisted living facility expansion dated March 14th, 2022.
I support.
Motion by Bills, support by Brown. Uh, any further discussion? All I'll say is, and I think we, there was broad support for this last time, that this is
Yes, sir.
I'm excited to see this project move forward.
Very excited.
And, uh, seeing no further discussion, all in favor of the motion to
Said a roll call.
I'm sorry, yeah, well, thank, you even just told me, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Supervisor Milky.
Uh, yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Houck?
Yes.
All yeses.
Very good. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item 11B on our agenda, uh, policy governance 2.3, compensation and benefits, and this really falls on our manager, so I'll hand the floor to you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
See you later. Thank you.
Do you have a, a date that you plan to start?
And
I missed him.
You gotta get through site plan approval.
Oh, okay.
You're jumping the gun.
My apologies.
So, the, uh, this is an opportunity for the board to review compliance with governance policy 2.3, which is titled Compensation and Benefits. This report is, begins on page 25 of your agenda packet. The policy, at its highest level, states with, that with respect to employment, compensation and benefit to employees, consultants, contract workers, volunteers, and collective bargaining units, the township manager shall not cause or allow jeopardy to fiscal integrity or public image. There are several, uh, subpolicies underneath that that I won't, uh, bother you with reading here. I interpret this policy to indicate that the Board of Trustees wants to ensure that the township manager, township management does not, uh, one, change the manager's compensation package except, uh, when approved and negotiated with the Board of Trustees, and that there should be no implied, uh, guarantee of employment for applicants or, or even existing employees outside of rights that might be, uh, afforded through a collective bargaining agreement, and that, uh, the board wants to ensure a competitive compensation and, or pay and compensation or benefits package, so that we can be competitive in, in, uh, hiring new employees when needed and, and even more important, retaining our existing employees. So, that's how I interpret it. Um, I think that interpretation follows the various subunits of the policy. There's some data points provided to you in the report. All positions that came open in 2021 were filled via a competitive pro- process using an interview team approach that we use here at, at the township, and, uh, where necessary, uh, postings and, for those openings, we're, we're also compliant with the collective bargaining agreement. In January of 2021, you may recall, a memorandum of understanding was executed, negotiated with the bargaining groups that provided some additional hours of, of sick leave to use for qualifying reasons related to COVID-19. Uh, that benefit was in place for half of the year. It expired on 6/30/2021, and that was an effort to, uh, if folks were out on, either because they had to be per our COVID protocols, tested positive or were in isolation, um, that they weren't having to dig a lot into their own personal existing sick banks. So, we negotiated, uh, a little bit broader benefit in that area, but it was for a specific, uh, period of time and has since expired. There's some other data points in the report, but I just wanted to highlight those two. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for manager?
No.
No.
I agree.
All right. Well, let's, can I go through, um,
Please.
report we submitted when due?
Yes.
Probably, to me, very often, one of the more important questions here is, does the manager's interpretation, uh, jive with all of you?
Yes.
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 I would agree too. Do you feel that there is proof provided to explain why the interpretation is reasonable?
Yes.
Yep.
Do you believe the interpretation addresses all aspects of the policy?
Yes.
So, that was those subitems that the manager talked about that felt that he also feels that way. Um, and then some of the data points that are here, um, obviously, we had some recent discussions that would add to that as well.
Uh-huh.
Any issues with, uh, compliance?
No issues.
So, we are in compliance then?
Yes, sir.
It was helpful to kinda be familiar with this from recent discussions. I'll leave it at that. So, that moves us to item 11C on our agenda, uh, governance policy 3.1, cost of governance, and this really now falls on us as the board in evaluating our performance or compliance. Um, I assume everybody's had a chance to kinda go through this, um, and I'm just gonna read this. Our policy states, because poor governance costs more than learning to govern well, the board will invest in its government, governance capacity. So, this is a lengthy portion of our, um, policy governance, as far as the section goes, but that's because we've added the appointments to our various committees. Um, I hope everybody had a chance to read through those again. We did do an update to it recently. Um, I think that continues to evolve and continue to mature. Uh, so let me ask if, uh, do you feel this board is in strict compliance?
I do.
Yeah.
Yeah. I feel it is.
I do too. Um, so I won't ask number two unless someone wants to speak on number two, which is... Okay. Um, how do you think we can improve the compliance, or improve the process to be further compliant?
Well, I had to say that I, I mean, I see all these flyers to go, if it's okay if I speak.
Please.
Um, I see all these flyers to go on trips to places and everything, but sometimes people don't have time to go away. It would be nice to bring in speakers on board governance once in a while.
We certainly could ask, uh, Mrs. Radwin, Ms. Radwin, if she'd be willing.
She the only one we have?
She's certainly one of the more skilled. Manager, do you know? Have we had others in besides? I've only met Susan Radwin.
Yeah.
Uh, but before I answered that, I, I heard Trustee Bill's question more or comment more along the lines of bringing people in to go over subject matters, but independent of the governance policy.
Correct.
Uh, Sue Radwin would be very good if we want to delve into governance policy, um, but, and you mentioned her name, so. Was your question more about general topics, finance?
Yeah, govern, govern, you know, just board training. I mean, in general, I mean, we coming off the street, we don't know, I didn't know anything at all about being a board member. So, I got the basic training, went through basic training, and then after that, um, there's been all kinds of offers to go out of town, which I have not been able to. You wanna talk?
Oh, you can finish.
Oh, okay. That's all I got.
Trustee Rice?
Um, oh, I
Treasurer Rice?
I, I was just gonna say, um, I know there have been times I can't go to like MTA trainings or stuff like that. They actually, a lot of places offer now, um, virtual training as well as in-person training. Um, a lot of times it's cheaper, um, because they don't have the food and stuff that they have to, you know, provide, things like that. Um, and it's cheaper at the township, 'cause room and board is not in there and everything else, so. Um, but, you know, there, there have been times where if there's a training you wanna go to, a lot of times you look and they will have a virtual training you can do at your own time. So, it doesn't even have to be at the same time as they're doing the live training. It's helpful to be there at the, the live training, only be, or either in-person or live virtually, just because then you can have that interaction back and forth. But it's, it's just as helpful watching the reruns, so.
Okay.
Maybe we need to be better as a board that when we see an opportunity, one of us may see it through some advertisement or something, and share it with the other board members to make, just kind of lift up the opportunities that are given, because there are plenty of opportunities. And I know I've done some of the virtual ones as well that have been helpful, so let's try to be better partners in sharing those opportunities with each other.
Okay.
That's great, great question or comment, kind of both. Any other ways in which we can improve? We're quiet tonight, aren't we?
Mine, mine was just basically, you know, making sure people are going through trainings when they can, whether it's virtually or in-person. Additional training always helps, so.
I would agree. Yep. All right, we'll move on unless there's objection. Okay, that finishes new business, so that brings us to extended public comment, item 12 on our agenda. Extended public comment is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. If you choose to address this board or public, please state your name and address for the record, and with that, we'll open up extended public comment at 7:27.
Okay. May I, please?
Please, yes.
My name is Erin Zimmer, and I live at 517 East Grand Avenue in Mount Pleasant. I'm sorry it took me so long to get here. I'm trying to make it to all these meetings. I'm juggling, and I just want to assure you that while it took me a long time to get here, I will be back many times. I'm here because I'm running for state representative of District 92 here in Mount Pleasant and the greater central Michigan area. I'm a lifelong resident. I grew up in the Rosebush area, and my husband and I are raising our family in Mount Pleasant now. So I'm a longtime Mount Pleasant Tony and love it here with everything I have. I graduated from Michigan State University with a degree in political science, and my first job out of college was working as a legislative aide for a state representative. So I have some experience in Lansing and really loved it there, but then had my kids and moved back here, did the mom thing, and then when they got old enough and were in school, I went back and got my degree in marriage and family therapy. I've been working as a therapist in Mount Pleasant at Christian Counseling of Michigan for the last few years. Really love it there, but have heard just some truly heartbreaking stories, especially working with young people, and knew I wanted to help more than I could, a few clients at a time, you know? As a therapist, I can see twenty to thirty people a week. As your state representative, I can help thousands of people, and that's really where my heart is calling me now. So that's what got me into it. I also have a little bit of local government experience. I am currently the chair of the Board of Review for the city of Mount Pleasant, so active in the community and involved in many service organizations. Just wanted a chance to introduce myself to this group, want to have a lot of outreach with you in the future. I plan to be easily accessible and connected to all of you. I will hand out my phone number at the end, so you can always know where to reach me, and I just look forward to serving you as state representative, should the voters decide to, to make that our, our choice. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no one else coming forward, we'll close extended public comment at 7:29 PM. And that brings us to item 13 on our agenda, manager's comments. Mr. Stooldryer, you have the floor.
And I have no comments tonight. Thank you.
Wow. This is going to be one of those meetings, isn't it? With that, item 14, final board member comment. We'll start with trustee Brown.
No comment tonight.
Trustee Bills?
I'm really looking forward to some warm weather. That's all I've got to say.
Treasurer Rice?
I'm good.
Clerk Cody?
No comment.
Trustee Houck?
I could wrap this up. I won't, I won't talk a lot. I normally do. I just want to, at our next meeting, Mark, can we get an update, even if we have to go into a closed session? Even if we have to go into a closed session, could we get a report on legal matters, see where we're setting?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. I don't have anything else. Thank you.
I had similar thoughts, trustee Houck, that, so I'm glad you brought that up. So thank you for that. And I don't really have anything this evening, so with that, I'd be happy to entertain any motions for adjournment.
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
Support.
Motion by Rice, support by Bills, all in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Surprisingly passed unanimously.
Thirty-one minutes.
I was going to say.